Fall has finally begun, it feels like, so it was refreshing to see. And we'll rise for our pledge of allegiance, and Dr. Eric Lohe will then, we'll ask him to say a word of prayer for us. Please rise.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Crossroads Church.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. God, we pause at the close of this day to be able to give you thanks. We thank you for your many and abundant blessings that we have. We give you thanks for life itself. We give you thanks for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings, and for the sustenance and for the friendships that are seen here. We thank you, God, for the ability to be able to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities to be able to serve one another. We thank you as well for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to be able to provide for others, and we thank you for loving us so. God, this evening, we would pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council this night. We ask God that you would graciously grant them the following: wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times; that you would give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our city and of our people; that you would give them a keen thirst for justice and for goodness and for righteousness; confidence in what is good and fitting; that you would give them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement; and that you would give them personal peace in their lives and joy in their task as they serve us. And so, God, we pray for the agenda that is set before them this evening. And please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work around our beloved city of Westfield. And it is in your most blessed and honored name that we pray. Amen.
Thank you very much. President Lehman, open the meeting, please.
Thank you. Call the meeting in order. Our first item would be to note the presence of a quorum, please.
Here.
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 Thank you. At this time, I'm not aware of any changes to the agenda, so it will stand as presented. We will move to the approval of the city council minutes from the meeting of September 12th, please. Is there a motion?
Move to approve September 12th minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
One comment. The very final page, I think, was a carryover in the template, and I would ask that that be taken out.
Yeah, we'll take that off. That's that big one.
Yeah.
And we will fix board track.
Thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. This time, we'll turn to any residents that want to speak on items not on the agenda tonight. Anybody want to speak with any cards?
I have no cards.
Anybody hearing, seeing none, will move on. We look to the approval of the claims. Docket was presented. Is there a motion, please?
So move.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm not aware of any special presentations tonight, so we're going to move on to our short agenda, and we will take under Old Business, ordinance 16-29. This is the Junction North PUD, and I believe in the place of Kevin Todd.
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. Pam Howard with Economic and Community Development, again in placement of Kevin Todd for the evening. Before you for adoption consideration, we have the Junction North PUD, which is located at the southwest corner of Union and Hoover Streets in downtown Westfield. The property is approximately 1.5 acres in size and currently consists of three single-family residential lots. The project would create up to five single-family residential lots in its place. The proposed ordinance does establish minimum lot size setback requirements as well as architectural requirements for the project, and the proposal is consistent with the vision outlined in the Grand Junction Implementation Plan. Since the council introduction, the ordinance has been modified so that any authority to make approvals, decisions, or interpretations related to this project that would otherwise be granted to the Director of Economic and Community Development would instead be delegated to the Director of the Public Works Department. This item did receive its public hearing at, on the September 6th Plan Commission Meeting, and comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the most recent Plan Commission Meeting. The petitioner is here but not planning on making a presentation. She is available for questions, as am I if you have any of staff. Thank you.
Thank you. As presented, this is up for adoption consideration this evening. I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Open for discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Pam. Moving to ordinance 16-37, 2017 budget. It was introduced on September 12th, and tonight we will be holding a public hearing. Unless there are any comments from the council, has been posted appropriately and noticed, and unless there's an objection, I'll open the public hearing, and then we can have comments. I will open the public hearing on the 2017 budget for the city of Westfield at 7:09. Do we have any cards, please?
We do not.
Is there anyone that would like to address the matter of public hearing on the 2017 budget?
Good evening, Council. My name is Ray Schneider, and I live at 4455 Whitney Road in Westfield, Indiana. I'm here tonight with some questions and comments regards the budget. I was here last year about this time talking about the 2016 budget. At that time, the PowerPoint presentation showed that the city had $31.4 million of income, but it had $34 million of expense. In my book, that's a $2.6 million deficit. It's a loss. It's red ink. The mayor asked the presenter at that point in time, do we have a balanced budget? A balanced budget is when you have your current year income minus your current year expenses equals zero, where they balance out. Last year, we had a $2.6 million deficit, and the presenter said, yes, we have a balanced budget. The budget was revised three times, and then on October 8th of 2015, the budget was resubmitted showing a $3 million cash fund transfer into the 2016 budget to get the income and expenses to agree. You know, my question is, where did this $3 million come from? Out of what fund? What was the balance in that fund before the $3 million was transferred out? What is the balance after the $3 million transfer? Another item I mentioned last year, and the city will rebuke it in saying it's not true, but until I see something in writing, as an accountant, I count on facts and documents. In the 2013 audit report, it said that there was a underfunded liability on the pension fund of $2,817,500. The 2014 report came out. I'm going to cut to the chase. The 2017 budget, I want you to remember two, three things. First, there is a $4.8 million deficit in this budget. Secondly, the salary ordinance that you're going to be looking at and approving tonight needs to be voted down, because if you approve that ordinance, you're basically approving the budget, locking in the expense numbers in this budget. Secondly, you need to provide the proof on the pension plans. You know, when is this city going to provide a balanced budget? When are you going to, I think, the council members, if you were provided the correct information so that you could understand what is in this budget, you would come to a different opinion. You're relying on the board, the city, to give you accurate information, which I don't think you have, because I know you would do the right thing. You wouldn't pass a $4.8 million deficit. If you had a deficit last year of $3 million, 4.8 this year, that's 7.9 million. When are you going to run out of money?
If you have other additional comments, please put them in writing.
I do, but, you know, I'm over my time and...
You're welcome to put them in writing.
Well, I'll send it to all the board members.
Thank you.
I think it's a shame.
Anyone else want to speak to the budget?
Lyndon asks, 1122 East 161st Street, speaking on behalf of the 161st Street neighbors. Opposed to this budget in deficit, population increased from 2010 to the 2016 special census by 22.6 percent. The budget in that same timeframe increased 72 percent. If you go to this year's budget, it will be an increase of 86.7 percent. Pages six and seven of the presentation are misleading since taxes don't go to the general fund if the growing properties are in TIF. All increase for existing MF and commercial, go to TIF, to the RDC, not to the general fund, so growing AV doesn't translate to new general fund property taxes. This budget should consider a reduction and capture to TIF, which could cover the deficit of 1.5 million. That could be a long discussion. The increase in certified budget last year was 4.3 percent. This year's budget proposed is double that. I'm including in comments a graph showing how our budget has gone up over the years. Quite an increase. Last October, the Westfield Sustainability Report said there would be $3 million taken from reserves, and nothing expected in 2017, but again, this year, you're saying you're going to take a million and a half from reserves. Opposed to using cash reserves to pay for excessive spending, look for budget reductions. Salaries appear in all budget departments, and therefore it's not easily seen how much the number of employees or amounts increase in total each year. Compensation is nearly $13 million annually. That is 87 percent of property taxes we take in. And once again, I think it's time that the council look at the employee's contribution to perf. It's never popular to take away benefits from people, but we are paying the 3 percent employee contribution so that they can participate in the perf, and on $13 million in compensation, excuse me, that's quite a considerable amount of money. Typically, the employees who benefit most from those two extras, when they're matching, are highly compensated. I know that from my experience as a CFO. Police and fire do not receive matching funds, and they, I mean, they do not get their contributions paid for. So I think that ought to be looked at, those considerable savings to be met. Do not vote on the salary ordinance tonight unless this, until this issue is discussed. Thank you. Bring benefits and compensation into line with currently available tax revenues and competitive salaries in the area. Other cities aren't doing this. Are we balancing the importance of police and fire to economic development in the budget? We suggest you prioritize public safety in the budget as number one. Cut administration if necessary. This administration has taken the clerk treasurer authorities given by the state municipal code and given them to employees outside that office and outside the authority of the CT. I would ask you to look at those laws which are attached to what I've submitted, and finances could be handled much more efficiently and cost-effectively if the duties of the clerk treasurer is outlined, were followed by all in the city, and dispensed with duplication under the administration. That's an elected office that has authorities assigned to it by law. Thank you for your time. I've sent everyone copies.
Thank you.
Which expounds.
Anyone else like to make public comment on the 2017 budget? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 7:17. At this time, council, do you want to respond in any way? The budget is in the process of working through. We do take the verbal comments, the written comments into consideration. The budget is in the early processes for 2017, and will continue to work on it for the next few months. Actually, we will also have a budget workshop. It will be open for public view. It has not been scheduled yet. I assume that it will happen within the next week to two weeks. Last year, it happened during the first week of October. We anticipate that approximately this year, and the public is welcome to observe that. So at this time, that would conclude the matter of ordinance 16-37, unless there's some discussion from the council.
I have one question.
Sure.
Is our coat number in yet? The certified coat?
2017?
The latest. It was supposed to come out?
We all have that till later in the year, just like we don't even have our assessed valuation numbers till later in the year, but we still, we have to develop the budget before those numbers are confirmed.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move to the items of new business, and the first item would be ordinance 16-38. It is the 2017 salary ordinance. This is up for a basic introduction this evening, and then for adoption consideration at the earliest October 10th. And to present that will be Todd Bertrand.
Members of council, 1638 is the annual salary ordinance that we present to you. You are correct that tonight, no action will be taken. It's an introduction, and it merely establishes the positions, some of which may or may not be filled throughout the course of the year, and it sets a high and low of what that salary band is based upon the candidate, the job, the job descriptions accordingly. So in it, is, this is our boilerplate for all the positions. Again, not all positions are filled, but in the event that people may move up into a position based upon their director or the need of the demand of the city, this establishes what those pay ranges are. So I think you have in front of you a red line of comparison of what would have been last year or this current year and what is being proposed for 2017. So with that, I will entertain your questions. There's a pretty straightforward document.
Thank you. Any questions from councilors? As mentioned, there's no action taken tonight. This begins the process. It does not end the process, so it will continue. Moving to ordinance 16-40, it's an amending ordinance, pledge of certain revenues to the city. Brian Zager, please.
Yes, sir. As you know, we adopted this ordinance previously with certain language in it. There was a red line, black line copy attached on the agenda, and if you paid much attention to it, you would see that the black lined copy referenced the previously adopted resolutions of the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission, rather than stayed out verbatim what was contained in there specifically. The bank that is involved in the transaction requested that that language be mirrored with what was in the RDA and the RDC without merely just referencing it. That was the first one. There was also an adoption or an amendment made today that the accountant referenced in the ordinance would be a CPA. Those two changes are before you. We're requesting that it be adopted tonight, which would require a suspension of the rules with unanimous consent, and then approved tonight, hopefully closed before the end of the month.
I'm going to make this clear. It is a revision of a previous ordinance, just clarity.
Yes, sir. It's not new.
Two items of change, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Coupation of language and resolutions adopted previously by other entities, rather than just referencing it, and specifying that the accountant in it is a certified public accountant.
Language change.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? This is up for recommendation for adoption this evening. We would need to suspend the rules. Is there a motion to that effect, please?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to suspend the rules. We can take action on this this evening. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. Moving along, we could consider the changes. It is a revision to ordinance 16-33. It's an amendment. Is there a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 16-40 as amended.
Second.
Thank you. Is any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the business matters. Under new business, we do have one minor lingering matter that we're going to address at this time, and at the last meeting, we had considered the, a request for a revision or a change to the food truck ordinance, and we have with us tonight representative from that request, and I would give them the opportunity to make a real short presentation, and we'll entertain that. So, John, welcome. Step forward, state your name for the record.
My name's John Knight. I'm the managing partner and founder of Grand Junction Brewing Company. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of the council tonight. What we're seeking, and I'll make this as brief as possible, is we're seeking an exemption to the food truck ordinance as it exists for a new production facility that we're going to be opening up in the next two to three months. The current ordinance here in the city of Westfield does not allow for food trucks at a location like this. The location is at 1189 East 181st Street. If you guys remember the old Holland House Lumber Company, we are repurposing that facility to act as our new production facility and tasting room. And the brewing industry is unique in the fact that we are required by the state of Indiana to provide food on-site for our customers to be able to sell our product. If you think of other businesses here in Westfield, for example, Tractor Supply, First Merchants Bank, The Flower Shop, Union Street Flowers, they don't have to provide food services on-site, obviously, to sell their products. So we are unique in that fact. That uniqueness, though, has a precedent to addressing that issue. There's a number of very well-known breweries throughout the state of Indiana, specifically in central Indiana, that have used food trucks to be able to provide food on-site to their customers to then be able to sell their product. And our product is obviously craft beer that's made and produced right here in Westfield. Without that opportunity or without that ability, we cannot sell our product. So that does present a unique obstacle for us. So we're here tonight to obviously request an exemption to that ordinance for that facility and that facility only. And many of you know that three years ago, we established our brew pub right here in downtown Westfield on Union Street. We opened a full restaurant at that time because state law did not afford us the ability or the opportunity to seek out these other measures and these other ways of providing food on-site for our consumers. We don't have the space or the resources at this current location to be able to put a full restaurant in and to provide the food ourselves. So one way we can meet that burden that's presented to us from the state is by being allowed to have food trucks at this premise. In addition, I'll conclude on this note. We have been working for the last few months with NDOT to allow a made in Indiana attraction sign on 31. This will obviously bring tourism and other people into the area. There's a number of folks that obviously come in for Grand Park as well. One of the requirements, and I have some handouts as well to provide you guys, but one of the requirements that we have to meet that criteria is that we are not a restaurant. We actually cannot be a restaurant. So a made in Indiana production facility cannot have a restaurant as a base. So part of that desire to have those attraction sites would also lead us to make this request as well. So I certainly appreciate the time and your consideration here for any questions as well that you guys may have.
Thank you, John.
So you said trucks, plural, on your site. Do you anticipate more than just yours?
The truck itself or the food, you know, truck, food trailer would not be ours. Okay, this would, this would be an independent company. We would not anticipate more than one, and we would not anticipate having food trucks on-site every day. Those food trucks would be brought in on days where business was expected to be, you know, at a higher demand than, you know, than other days of the week. For example, Wednesdays, Wednesday evenings are obviously, they're not really busy from a restaurant standpoint, so we probably would not have food trucks on-site on Wednesdays. Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays would typically be the days that we would want to bring a food truck, and I say food truck, not trucks, but a food truck in to be able to satisfy the demand of customers, out-of-town guests, but also local guests that are coming to our production facility and also, you know, sitting within our tasting room as well.
Would you envision customers going out to the food truck to get their food, or would you have some kind of arrangement where they could order and they would be brought into them?
The initial consideration at this point is that we would have the food truck sitting outside of the facility. There's a large overhead door that is... There's a large overhead door that is on the front of the building. There will also be an entrance door as well. So we would have customers actually going to the food truck that's going to be right outside that main overhead door and that main entrance door to purchase their food, and then they can bring it back in to the facility instead of the tables, you know, inside the tasting room.
Any other questions or comments?
Would you anticipate doing business with several different food truck vendors? So, I mean, would there be some rotation or is it likely to be the same one?
There will be a rotation. The simple fact is that having one particular food truck vendor identified or having one particular food truck vendor listed within the exemption we're requesting could put us as a business in a tough position. If that food truck vendor relocates, is no longer here in the area, that would require then that that exemption be reviewed again. So we would anticipate that the food trucks that are servicing this production facility and tasting room would rotate. So there would be different food truck vendors obviously that are utilized.
You would not object to us limiting it to if we gave an exemption to one food truck at any given time?
No, not at all.
The only comment I have is I would, I'm sure we're going to be approached by other people wishing to have an exemption to the ordinance, and I would like to have some sort of metric developed, and I do support this idea because they're hamstrung by a state law and to make the business continue to grow, I think we should do this. But I'd like to have some metric developed so that we can measure the impact of this. So if it's positive, negatives, we have some kind of data upon which to judge future requests that come before us. So I would just ask that the city administration figure out a metric to use in that capacity.
I would suggest that we could limit it to breweries and tasting facilities, tie it to a certain kind of business.
In general, is the council favorable to considering this exemption?
I have one more question.
Sure.
Would you be willing to include that the food truck could only operate during your hours of business?
I actually think that's a great question. Absolutely. And I know there's concern in regards to, and there's some sensitivity to this request. And that food truck would only operate during the hours that we're open, and I have absolutely no problem whatsoever to making sure that that's explicitly stated within any exemption that's granted.
In general, I certainly support it. I would agree. I think we do need to be, we may need some metrics that allow us to approve or deny future requests that would not, I mean, I think most of us know why we did this originally. We didn't want to compete with, we didn't want food trucks coming in and setting up in vacant lots and various other places and compete with our local businesses who were trying to get started or trying to make a go of it. So I just want to make sure that we don't, in doing this, that we don't do something that would defeat the intent of the original ordinance, but I certainly support this particular use.
Thank you. Listening and to a reasonable conclusion here so we can move on, would any counselor here be willing to spend a few minutes and work with John and work out the details so that we could come? I mean, I don't think we should call for any action tonight. We don't have the details worked out. But is someone willing to work with John and work from a practical side to get the details worked out so that we can take action at the next meeting?
I'd work with him, but I would defer to somebody who was part of the original ordinance to make sure that, you know, I feel like they would have a better understanding of what needs to be worked through so it was taken care of.
In, okay, is anybody here want to hold their hand up? Okay, in Mr. Ake's absence, I hear him, I see him raise his hand. So I'm going to assign this to Mr. Ake. He did mention that he would be willing to participate, so if he doesn't want to get appointed, he can show up at the meetings.
And Counselor Lehman, I do have, do have plans and specs on the space, some more detailed information that I'd be more than happy to share with counsel. I think it's appropriate as well.
We'll work with you on it.
Okay.
Jim has stated some interest. He's willing to, he'll be back in a day or two, and we'll get with you and we'll get something worked out.
Sounds wonderful. I appreciate it. Thanks for the time.
Reasonable counselors?
Sounds good.
And Mr. President, I think-
Yes.
-your legal counsel and I authored the document so we can, we're happy to help, you know, with whatever modifications. There's probably needs, if this is going to be done, there needs to be a permitting process probably too.
So you're holding your hand up? Is that correct?
Yes.
Good.
It makes sense.
Thank you.
No. You didn't.
Now, we understand that. We'll look to current ordinances and see what we're going to do to help you out. We understand it.
I appreciate it. Thanks for the time tonight.
Thanks, John. Appreciate you having business here in Westfield. That does conclude our agenda items for this evening. I would look to any of the counselors for comments, please.
Can you have an update on our ABC meeting last week? We heard Liberty Ridge Plan Unit Development was back with some significant changes. We did open that up to public comments due to the major changes, and we did get a lot of comments from the public and particularly from the plan commission. There were still several things with this new plan that the commission was not happy with, so it has gone back to review some additional changes. And the other item on our agenda was the Junction North Plan Unit Development District, which we acted on this evening. That was it. It was fairly short meeting for a change.
Thank you. Cindy? Have anything for us? Come on. Janet? Junction? Come on, Grand Junction? This weekend?
Well, Melody's here, but this weekend, we have our Grand Junction Derby on the first as well as the Janus at the Junction event, and that will feature the flying toasters. That's a ticketed part, the only ticketed part of the event. The rest is free. Hope everyone can make it.
I'm sorry, what was the time?
The race starts at 3:30, correct? Three.
One or two? Three o'clock it starts?
Tricycles at three, derby cars 3:30.
Okay, great. Any other counselor comments? We'll turn it over to the mayor. Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chuck. Bulk Trash Day, October 8th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at City Service Building on 171. Check the website for those items that are eligible. If you haven't had a chance to get out to the homearama, please do so. It's, I think, one of the largest homearamas that central Indiana has had. There are some 11 custom homes out there, and in the first week, which is last week, it's Thursday through Sunday, I believe, they had over 5,000 people from around go through the displays, and the parking is actually at Lot C at Grand Park and some very, very efficient, very timely buses are back and forth there. It's working out, I think, really well. Our cops just had one of their coffees recently at Titus Bakery, and we're getting more and more people to attend there. One of our, one of our local officers, Billy Adams, coordinates those, and they try to run those about four years, four times a year. And speaking of Billy, he was awarded one of our awards along with Mike Shirley from Westfield Fire at last Friday evening's Lantern Awards annually put on by the Chamber of Commerce. And that was another wonderful time where we celebrate a new, some of our businesses and our volunteers of the year and so on. And we were also able to honor through a city employee nomination, a fellow I want to speak briefly about, and his name is Dennis Hayes. And Dennis is a guy that has been around working for the city, I think, some 17 years. And Dennis is a guy, works for, in Public Works, and Dennis is one of these guys that I think probably every one of you has seen but has probably maybe not noticed him or know exactly what he does. But Dennis is the guy that makes, he's an employer's dream when it comes to dependability. He works the streets. He's the guy that shovels all of our sidewalks around here. He shovels all of the downtown. He spreads salt. He delivers the mail around the city. But where you might have seen him more often is if you ever see a guy out anywhere in this city picking up trash, that's Dennis Hayes. And he does so with such a passion. It's his thing. And Dennis is also very knowledgeable. He can tell you what is the most widely smoked cigarette in Westfield, the top soft drink drank by our citizens. He can also tell you the number one retailer plastic bag. And the answers to those, by the way, are Marlboro Light, Mountain Dew, and Walmart. And what I would ask of you is don't honk at him if you see him. He'll jump out of his little yellow vest. But if it's safe, roll down your window and just yell at him and say, "Thanks, Dennis," because it truly means the world to him, that we honored him, and he's just one of those guys that's just an absolute salt of the earth kind of, kind of person that I guess we sometimes take for granted, and he's always there. And he just really exemplifies what Westfield's all about. So look for Dennis. Thanks.
Thank you. That concludes all of our business for this evening, and unless there's an objection, it is time to adjourn. Thank you. Thank you.